It's all right, it is five o'clock and I will call the board this meeting of the Arminic Seaboard Trustees on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. We are here for a district priority workshop, this is, this one is on the culture of professional learning. And I will turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Trustees and staff members, thank you all for being here tonight. As you know, this has been a priority under the culture priority. Which we've been talking about for a while tonight, Dr. Works and Ginger are both here. They're gonna be walking through how we've invested in professional learning to better our system and to better our culture as a school.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for being here. We're really excited that Ginger and I to be here tonight to actually talk about this. We've had an idea and an opportunity to actually have an opportunity to work with teachers slowly over time to build skills. And now it's embedded in the calendar, we're actively in the process of actually making it come to life. So we thought today would be a great time to have a quick recap about what we're trying to accomplish, how it's related to the plan that we shared with you last year and where we are. So our purpose tonight is to do a couple of things. We're going to talk specifically around the professional learning plan. So on your desk just to orient you, each of you have a copy, a printed copy of the professional learning plan that was shared with the board last year. And then you have one other document that we're gonna use just as an activity that we're gonna do. But what we wanna spend our time today doing is thinking about that plan specifically and talk about how we're now operationalizing that plan in terms of the five embedded learning days that are happening in our calendar. And then we also would like to gather insights specifically from you board members to help us inform our continued planning efforts that will go on over the course of the entire school year. So before we get started, I actually thought at your tables, I want you to invite you to turn to your colleagues and just spend a couple of minutes talking about, when you hear the word collective efficacy, what does that mean to you? Just at your tables, if you'll just talk about that, what does collective efficacy mean to you?
Collectively.
It's not a professional slash.
You feel good about your, you like what you're doing.
Interim education.
Work with each other.
Yeah, bringing in different.
How is that actually happening?
Will, is there any more?
Take about ten more seconds. Okay. So what are some ideas that you talked about at your table when you think of the term or the phrase of the term collective efficacy? What does that mean to you? One from this table.
You like what you're doing, you feel confident about how you're doing it and it's collaborative.
Okay.
It's not the only style. You're better, like you said, Claudia, you're better because you're doing, you're doing the work as a unit.
Okay.
And you feel confident.
Okay, so there's an, there's an element of self-reflection there and it's a collaborative effort as a unit, all right? Anybody have anything to add to what she shared? What else can we talk about?
Along with the confidence, we also talked about believing that you can positively impact students.
Yeah, so collective efficacy is that thing, it's being effective collectively towards a common goal. And I wanted to elevate that specific concept in the space today because that's really the way we're approaching professional learning across the district. Each of us have individual roles to play in terms of our own growth and development. And so what you're pointing to Sarah, we also have to feel like we're learning at the pace we need to be learning and that we're feeling confident in our ability to implement the things we learn. But then it's also the combined effort of all of us learning together that actually is gonna grow an outcome for students. And it takes everybody in the room and it can cross the system to actually make space for learning to happen for everybody. So I wanted to, we wanted to start off and share a graphic, actually Dr. Stood did this multiple times with leaders across the system. This one's from McReel International and some of you may be familiar with them, they're a research organization. And they really talked about how you develop a purposeful community and they underscored around four major concepts. This idea of collective efficacy, being able to maximize and use all of your assets and resources towards something. Really having goals that matter to everybody, so common goals that everyone can work towards and an agreed upon way in which you're gonna go about getting them. When those three, when those four things come together, you can really establish purpose that drives the community towards productivity. And that's really the frame that we wanna kind of think about our work today when we talk specifically around professional learning. When the team started designing professional learning as we think about it, one of the things we know that educators do a lot across multiple districts across the country is we like to front load things. And sometimes we overdo that, we, we just, we give like brand new teachers hired and a lot of pencil spent days and days and we front load. And what we all know is that we learn best when we have a chance to learn a little bit, practice, receive coaching, on the job coaching, learn a little bit more and build that, that efficacy, like you said, over time. So our learning design, when we think about the way we're going to offer professional learning in Arlington, is we're shifting towards designing where we're calling it the slow drip, it's a slow drip over time. Like you don't have a whole cup of coffee to pour in, you drip it slowly. And each time there's a session of learning or an opportunity to learn, we wanna receive feedback, not only from the, not just the audience members, we wanna know all across the system, like how was your experience, does it actually help you be more effective in the classroom? And utilize that feedback to drive in a reciprocal way the quality and the type of learning that's happening for the individuals. The other thing is, once you, you might, you may actually have an opportunity to dive into specific learning, then the question is, is how does that then translate into actual practice? And so you'll see on the right hand side, we really are trying to focus on what are the interim supports? What are the supports that we need to have in place to help a person transfer their new learning into actual practice? In such a way where they can do what you mentioned Sarah, reflect on their own personal self-efficacy and know that they're actually making progress and feel good about that. And also that that good feeling is not just a, I think I'm doing it well, it actually is actually translated into the action that they learned about in their, in their professional learning. All these things are grounded around what you're seeing inside your professional learning plan, which is what we believe about professional learning. And this concept of a theory of action, that if you do these things, they ideally will generate the specific outcomes you're looking for for kids. So today, as we go through our session today, we're gonna ideate specifically around components of that and how those things are being represented in the way that we're going about teaching really all employees in the classroom here in Arlington.
Good evening. The first part we're gonna dive into was that part on the left, the learning design. So we've really been working with the team around how do we design learning that does what Dr. Works described? That's a slow drip over time and it has an immediate applicability to the classroom so that teachers feel like it's super relevant. And so we're working in what we're calling a district professional learning defined team, which is a cross collaborative group of folks who've come together to kind of envision what could this look like over the course of the year for us to enact our professional learning plan. And as professional learning designers, we have historically been really good at defining outcomes and objectives for our professional learning. And so we've been really pushing the team to get really action oriented and working about those objectives. What does it mean to do some learning that then will translate directly into an action, a teacher practice specifically? So we took that one step further in our design team and we asked ourselves, how can we get even more granular to ensure that those things that we're learning in professional learning translate into those student outcomes that you see at the top of this model? And so we've spent a lot of time talking about what are the discrete teacher practices that are connected to that learning? Sometimes we've been engaged in learning where we've learned a really great concept or the theory and we wanna make sure that we're always tying that to something that's really relevant. So we use the forty X framework to think about teacher practices and that how are they, how are we choosing teacher practices that are evidence based? So we know that they're predictive of a certain student outcome. How are we picking teacher practices in addition that are influenceable? They're within the teacher's locus of control, they can actually do them, right? They have the conditions in their classes to actually execute that. And then of course that they're observable so that we can be in community with each other talking about what those practices look like. And then those practices of course should lead to student outcomes. So we've been also challenging our designers to think about, if this is a learning outcome and the teacher practices, what behaviors should we be seeing in the classroom as a result of this learning and action? And so we've been spending a lot of time getting super specific so that we're really honoring our teachers' time when they're coming to the professional learning sessions. But as Dr. Works alluded to, then we have to figure out how do we break those down across the opportunities that we have with teachers? And so those learning outcomes and teacher practices define a strand of learning. So for example, I might be a social, a high school social studies teacher. So there's a specific set of practices that I'm gonna be engaged in this year. But how do we break that down into teacher practices and student outcomes in September? So that I have a small chunk of learning to be able to apply? So that when I come back on October tenth, I can reflect on those practices, I can be a community with other teachers in that same role and layer on new learning or go deeper into that practice? And we have the great opportunity in our calendar to be able to do that across all of these five days. So what does that actually look like concretely? In the workshop tonight, we're taking structured literacy as an example of how what we're working on and the principles we're trying to enact and how that's actually playing out concretely. So when we think about structured literacy, we started with the key shifts and strategies, which are kind of those big learning strand objectives. And then we broke it down into each of those professional learning days. What would be the specific teacher practices and student outcomes for those days? So teachers are engaged in these chunks of learning that they can then apply in the classroom in between. One of the things that we think about when we think about growth mindset is sort of an individual growth mindset. When we think about professional learning, the idea here is that if I have something really small, really concrete to be able to go back and try and maybe even not do so well at it and get some support and be able to come back and do more learning, then that will create this sort of culture that we're aiming for around, we're a growth minded system. And we have space to try new things, to take risks, so that in the end we're stronger and our students are stronger for it.
So can I, that's one of the points we asked, I think that's a shift in the way that we think about learning, especially around adults. What we're trying to cultivate with adults in the system is that there is not an expectation that I teach you once and that you mastered it. There's an expectation that you try it, you reflect on it, you get better, you work out it, you reflect on it, you get better. So when you think about learning, the best way I can think about it for myself is, how would I expect a young learner to learn? As adults, we learn in very similar ways, need the same permission to actually try something out, even if it feels scary or I don't feel like I'm adequate or that I can do a good job. We wanna give people the space to actually try it. And so we're really trying to like, really focus on this idea with all of our employees around, it's about the growth mindset. It doesn't have to be perfect the first time. Our goal is to help support you in your effort to try to make it as good as you can get over time.
So we've talked for a few minutes, we wanna give you an opportunity to kind of process some of the things that we're working on. So we'd invite you to dig into your professional learning plan. I'll specifically point you to page one. There is a portion in the middle that talks about our release and assumptions. And then also page seven, toward the bottom, there's a section that talks about continuous improvement. So I'm gonna give you a minute to read through that and then talk at your tables around this question. What connections from those two sections of the professional learning plan do you see as we talk about those strands of learning and the specific teacher practices and student outcomes? So we'll give you some time to process that, talk at your tables, and then I'll have a couple of people share out for the larger group. Anything I can clarify for you?
So the big idea that you wanna think about is, as you're reading it, how do you see the concept of, we have a strand of learning we want you to learn? What, how do you see that you represent, you represent that they are very specific teacher practices aligned with that strand that generate very predictive outcomes for students? How do you see that kind of through line in the way that we're thinking about professional learning? That we're not just going to teach you in a session, we're actually gonna try to identify what behavior we want you to capture when you walk away from the session that's actually predictive of something you can do with kids?
All right. Thank you for pointing out that my question wasn't completely clear. I think one point of clarification, I can kind of back up and reiterate, is around the strands of learning. So if I'm a teacher, I'm engaged in sort of a single topic of learning throughout the year. So for example, if I'm a self-containing first grade teacher, I won't necessarily be hopping around to lots of different professional learning. I'm concentrated, I'm focused around a specific goal. And in this case, that's around structured literacy. So my learning across these days will be focused around that single strand or topic of learning throughout these days. Doesn't mean that I won't receive coaching or supports in other areas, but for the purposes of this learning, I'm really focused on that throughout the year. So just a couple of share outs from your tables, what were highlights from your conversation as you were looking at the professional learning plan and thinking about the strands of professional learning?
One of the things we talked about at our table was, actually let me go back to that jumpy, that jumpy slide.
Yeah, the jumpy slide.
That it's not just that there, there's a focus topic, but it's with a particular group of, of other teachers, like teachers that you're coming back to, which, which then builds in the idea of collective efficacy even, even in this, in this project. So structured literacy, but not with a random bunch of people every time, with a particular cohort of, of other teachers. And you, you practice, you bring it back together and then you, you learn together, which builds that collective efficacy even deeper than simply at your campus, at your campus level.
So multiple levels of support are built in, we're creating a community of learners that we can do this together, get stronger together. Awesome, thank you. All right. Dr. Works is gonna talk about, this came up at one of the tables already, like what happens in between? How do you get the supports? And so he's gonna talk a little bit about implementation supports and how we envision those.
So to the point that you just made, Dr. Champion, the idea is that the teacher engages in this strand of learning over the course of time with almost like in a cohort kind of situation where I'm sitting with a group of teachers that I can lean in on and learn from along with the people that are actually teaching me. And after I'm actually getting my initial content, then the question is, is how do I transfer that? How do I transfer what I've learned into, in a session for example, or during a professional learning day like tomorrow, into the classroom and actually affect my kids? And so what are we gonna spend some time talking about is what this reciprocal relationship looks like in terms of, I just learned, now there are what we're calling in-between supports? And then how do I reflect on my own practice and ensure that that action actually translates into, into student movement? So I think you brought this up actually a couple of minutes ago at this table, this idea of what we're calling a bridge. Meaning how do I make sure that when I learn something on September nineteenth, it's directly connected to what I'm about to learn in October? And that October tenth builds on the nineteenth and that there's been a bridge in between those two places to help me in my implementation of practice? So what does that bridge look like? Well, there are a couple of ways we think about that. We think about, about it in terms of people development support. So for example, one-on-one coaching, one of the questions that came up in your conversations at your table was, where do coaches fall in all of this? Are coaches learning alongside teachers? Are they hearing what teachers need to learn and then applying their coaching model to that practice? The answer is yes. Team coaching and PLC, so to this concept that Dr. Champion was talking about, how do groups of teachers come together, even at their own schools, to really think about the practice of their learning? So today, for example, we did learning walks, I was at South Davis, and one of the things that the principal talked about specifically was they're bringing their PLC together and when they have their training tomorrow on the nineteenth, the very next week, actually four weeks, they're gonna spend all of their PLC time with those separate group of teachers, really diving deep into that learning and then helping them apply it in the classroom. Observation and feedback, going to the classroom, actually looking for the specific discrete teacher behaviors and the student outcomes that you would expect to see in the classroom as it relates to the learning. So one of the things that we did today, for example, when we were walking classrooms is, we didn't look for everything you would try to find in a structured literacy classroom. We were only looking to give feedback and look at the things that were taught. So if, if a teacher for example was taught how to use HMH materials as it relates to structured literacy, that would be an element of something we would go look for in the classroom, which we weren't necessarily talking about small group if we hadn't taught them that yet. And then learning for campus leadership, so how do we think about the three sixty perspective? Meaning it's not just the teacher's responsibility to learn and grow, it's our responsibility to support that individual. So what role does the principal play? What role does the assistant principal play? The coach, central office, and ensuring that there's learning to support campuses along the way. And then we think about instructional resources and support. So one of the commitments we made is we weren't going to ready to learn and then you go back to your classroom and you don't have the resources and materials to actually do the thing that we taught you. So we inventoried every classroom in the district to make sure that they had the resources. We had those resources delivered and we actually unboxed them, put them in the classes for the teachers. So making sure those materials are in place. On-demand hubs, like where can a teacher go to receive on-demand learning when it's the in-between sessions? If I, all the learning that you get around structured literacy for example, which is the example reason tonight doesn't have to happen in a session. There are lots of ways to learn, trying to create supports that, that allow teachers to access new knowledge and also to create structure for people who are supporting that, that learning in the classroom after the session's over. Newsletters, reminders, and then the big idea is this concept of community of practice, which is bringing people together who are all collectively working towards the same goal. So I just wanted to share with you a brief example of what that looks like in terms of our example of structured literacy. Here you can see across, around the perimeter of the circle, campus literacy team. So all of our, our schools that are involved in structured literacy, professional learning, ATXRL, there's actually a, a like five-persons literacy team that's wrapping themselves around the teachers in the classroom. Resources for teachers, models for coaching, all these different examples, including reflective tools where a teacher can assess their own learning along the way. So what we wanted to do is, when you think about the concept, so you're being taught, now you're the teacher actually trying to hit them and there's a wraparound support for you. We wanted to invite you to dig into pages four and five. So on pages four and five, you're gonna see that the team extracted very specific components of the leadership definition, which really leads into the concepts that we're talking about tonight around our commitment around personal growth, around how we actually are dedicated to each other in terms of implementation. At your tables, if you'll just look through the leadership definition there and see as you're done dialoguing, what connections you can make to how the implementation supports are actually reflected in those indicators that you're seeing in the leadership definition? And then the question to ask is, are there additional supports that we didn't talk about that you think that we should be thinking about? That maybe you can provide as a question. So two thoughts, where do you see what we talked about in the leadership definition? And then the takeaway that we've been looking at your feedback on is what else should we be thinking about that we may not have talked about yet so far tonight? I'll give you about five seconds in your tables to do that. So what are some of the ideas that you talked about? So the, the, the professional learning plan is the anchor about what we believe about a growth learning. And in there, we've embedded some of the things specifically that have been extracted out of the leadership definition. What did you notice that, that in terms of connection between what we say we want to accomplish and the things that we're talking about? And what initial supports should we consider? Give us some thoughts. You wanna jump in?
Absolutely. Hey, when we looked at the fourth one down, leader of the organization, the fourth point down went soft. Track and monitors progress towards goals and create shared accountability for results. What I really like about this is it matches what we've been talking about repeatedly is that we don't work in silos, but it goes throughout all departments, throughout campuses, and that we're also owning the results from the top down, but also from the bottom up, that this is a collaborative effort and it is gonna be monitored. But that they're also gonna have that support throughout because we can set this high achieving goal, but if they don't have the support that they need that is different than what they have been getting, how are we gonna expect them to achieve those results?
Right, the, the fact that students are learning to read or not learning to read is really all of our responsibility. So it's not just at the feet of the teacher, it's our responsibility to make sure that the things are put in place and supports are there to actually help him or her do it. And the outcomes are all of ours, that's right. Someone from Patty's table, would you share some of your conversations?
So we, we kind of had two conversations, but I think ours was more on the second bullet.
Okay.
Okay. So one of them was, throughout it talks about monitoring results of progress. And the question we had was, the learner that went through it may or may not be monitoring it, but campuses are very large and the leadership team may not be as large as every strength of the bus. How does a leadership team know what to monitor? What, what did the reading teacher or the math teacher or the science teacher go to? I went with reading and I don't want to go to the teacher.
Right, and I think that's, that's a really good question. Meaning if you are a campus that actually has multiple priorities, let's just go to the high school for example, that's something outside of structured literacy. How do I know or how do I work with my leadership team to distribute that? And make sure they're all receiving support and the strand that they're actually getting supported? And that's a really good question. I think it's something we're all having to grapple with, to be honest with you. It also leans in on us about keeping our priorities narrow. Because I think what you're elevating at point is you can't actually do everything all at once. It's almost the reason why we're leaning to this concept about a learning strand is because a teacher that's in a classroom who has like five preps and five different things, they can't learn everything at once. They can't improve all of the practice. So yeah, that's it, that's a question that we have to grapple with, yeah. You made a comment earlier Patty that I think is worth elevating, which talks specifically about our individual roles. Would you share with the group about that?
Yes, I was talking about, it, it's a, it's a mindset shift, right? If we, if we're encouraging reflection, we also have to hone our learning, right? And, and we're shifting the mindset of, this is a, this is not a one-time event, right? It is an ongoing growth and also helping all of us to be learners at all times because I've got to hone my learning, it's not somebody else's responsibility to make me learn.
Right, and that's a, that's a really important shift in the way we're thinking about the professional learning culture in the system. It's not about getting your hours done that are required for release time later on during the school year. It's really about thinking like, what do I need to know to be able to do as a professional to move the needle to my students? And what role do I play in making sure that I assess my own gaps and that I lean into what learning I need for myself to fill those up? Okay, let's keep going.
So the next piece, this question was raised, you know, just in this conversation, how are we monitoring and measuring our impact? And so there are two ways that we think about collecting data to be able to use to continue to improve. So one is around the learning designs. We have a professional learning management system that has a survey built into it so that we can get feedback on that day from participants who are in the learning session about what met their needs and what didn't meet their needs. So I'll show you a little bit about what that looks like. And then we also have a new tool that we're developing with research and accountability to measure this idea around self-efficacy. So I went back and I implemented it in my classroom, how did it go? What impact did I see if I didn't implement it, what was getting in my way? So we'll look at some of those questions too and talk about the, the data that we're hoping that that produces for us. So the first one, our professional learning management system is KICKUP. And this is one example of a question that we ask at the end of our learning sessions. So it's an open-ended response that teachers can respond to, so this is a like real-life example of responses where teachers were able to tell us what about the session met their needs and what didn't meet their needs.
Are these anonymous when they do it or just is it attached to their employee ID number?
It's not attached to their employee ID number, we just know which session they attended and we know a little bit about their role. So it will tell us that there was, they were a teacher or a dean or a principal. Here's another example of where we get a little bit of quantitative feedback, still kind of self-report feedback, but the idea here is that we have some numbers behind our session. So this particular question asks, what was your level of knowledge when you came into the session? And then what was your level of knowledge by the end of the session? So like sometimes these numbers are really close together and that's really good feedback for us. And sometimes they're basically getting different and that's great feedback for us too. The next slide is an example of how the third grade district literacy team took that information from KICKUP, kind of summarized it for their team to sort of celebrate the progress that they, that they made in designing learning. So this, these are some examples that they pulled out of the data that teachers actually gave them positive feedback around. So they were able to celebrate, we met their needs, we gave them tools. They're pleased with how they can navigate through the curriculum, so I'll give you a minute to read some of those. An example of where they use of the numerical data, there's a question in KICKUP, the professional learning management system, that says, what's getting in your way? Or what do you think will get in your way of implementation before you even left the learning space? And so this was around the campus literacy teams that Dr. Wirths talked about earlier. So after the end of that particular session with those campus literacy teams, they used this feedback to understand that the people in the space were seeing conflicts with the curriculum. They weren't sure if they have all the resources to apply their learning. So the team was able to respond by making sure they had the resources, they did the resource audit, they made sure that everybody had the materials that they needed to be able to implement. So this is one mechanism that we use to kind of get feedback and be responsive to what's happening in the learning space. The other part that's new is the work that we've done with research and accountability around the self-efficacy survey that I was referring to. And Dr. Wirths, I'm having a moment. Do we have the questions printed?
We'll have to scroll to the slide.
Okay.
Yeah, one of the slides.
One of the slides?
Yeah.
Okay. So in the self-efficacy survey, what we asked ourselves is, how can we ask teachers, what did you implement? Like, did you implement daily? Did you implement ever? Like on that scale, how much did you implement those practices that we talked about last time? What did you see as far as student engagement when you were implementing those practices? If you didn't implement those practices, what got in your way? If you did, what helped you? Did you work with your coach? Did you co-sign with your team? So some of those implementation supports are listed in there to be able to understand what's helping them implement and what's getting in the way of implementation. And so this is an example of one of the question sets. So I'll pop out of this and make it bigger in just a minute. But teachers respond to this on a scale, and this is about a third of the question. The survey only takes about five to seven minutes. It looks long, but really it's like yes, no, or I did it a lot, or I did it a little bit. So that we can get some data about when you left the session, what did you do with the information that you left? That's a current gap in the system. We don't collect that data unless we're going on some of the learning walks that Dr. Wirths was referring to. So this will be a way that we can collect it across the system. We'll be able to cut the data by school, by learning strand, so that we can share that with the different people that need this data to be able to support our teachers. Okay. So on your table, you have a sort of note taker. We'd love to know, as you're reading through these sample survey questions, what do you notice about this survey? What do you think the information, what kind of information do you think that we'll get from this? And then how might the responses strengthen our professional learning execution? What will it help us get better at? And then, of course, any wonderings that you have. So we'll give you a minute to look at these sample statements from the survey and kind of chat at your table, and we'd love for you to capture your notes. This is brand new for us, and so your feedback is really valuable, especially on this part. All right. I heard some really great feedback about it in our meeting tables. Thanks to all that down on your thinking wonder worksheet, and we'll take those. I can tell this is scaring a lot of conversation, which is exciting, because this is brand new. So I shared this with one table, but I want to make sure to share with everyone. The first time that we'll administer this survey is tomorrow. Tomorrow is our first embedded professional learning day. So when teachers walk in, they'll have an opportunity to think about what they learned in district-wide, reflect on it, chat with some people, and then they'll open up the survey and respond to the survey. What we'll do is gather your feedback and consider improvements for the October administration of the survey. Did you want to add anything?
Yes. Can we hear two wonder rates that came up in the room? What's a couple of wonder rates that jumped out at you?
We wondered how presenters are supported and how to read the data, and then what coaching is provided to help them adjust their practice when they're setting up this event.
Very good. Because it's interesting, because can I bring up your comment? You want to share it?
Well, I was just looking at what's on this slide, and I noticed that these are all soliciting feedback about what I'm going to do as the participant or the teacher. But where is there an opportunity for feedback to the learning I experienced? And so Dr. Wirths told me that they will have that opportunity, but it's going to live in KICKUP, right? Is that right? And I appreciate that, because that way everyone gets feedback, and everyone's part of the continuous learning.
So there are two anchor points that I think is really important to elevate, as we're just kind of get to what you were saying, Dr. Paulins, which is, you learn, and you give feedback on what the quality of your learning experience was. And then you go practice, practice, practice with these bridges supports we've been talking about. And the first thing you do when you come back to the next session is you tell us like, how do I feel about how it's been going for me? My own self-recollection. And then you get your learning that day, and at the end of that day, before you leave, you give us more feedback about what you learned and how you learned it. And that cycle happens every time over the course of the entire year. So we're constantly thinking about, what is the quality of the learning you're having? And how's it feel when you go implement it? And we're using all of that data, to your point, to try to drive the way we think about our work, so.
And of course, this is all grounded back in. How do we measure at each of these points? So just like Dr. Wirths punctuated, we want to make sure that we have added this element of getting data in those in-between supports. How did it implement? How did it go? So that we can support teachers in impacting student outcomes. This last piece, I just wanted to, did you want to have it?
No, please.
There are a lot of backend supports that we're building. Tyne was referring to this earlier, to clarify communication across the system, because this is really new. So we've thought about all of the different stakeholders that need to know where to go and what to do and where to find things. Not only our teachers, but as well as our principals. Here are the slide decks. If I'm a principal and I'm wondering what my teachers are learning about, I know this is not streamlined the way that we want it yet, but we have this accessible for them. We also have tools and resources for our facilitators. So how do I go into KICKUP and look at my data, and how do I design and facilitate well? What are those standards? All, of course, coming full circle back to creating this community where everyone has a place in professional learning and a piece of ownership in professional learning in Arlington. Any thoughts on this?
That's it? Any questions or comments anybody wants to share before we close out? KICKUP back to you, Dr. Paulins.
Everybody good? So tomorrow is our first district-wide professional learning day. And we had this workshop strategically before that day, because one of the things, trust bees in particular, that sometimes you may get some questions in the community is, I've got to get childcare for my kid now. How are we using these days? And what are we actually maximizing these days? I hope today brought you an idea of the theory behind professional learning, the approach that we're taking to structured literacy, and the importance that everybody in this room knows about why we're focusing on structured literacy for Arlington ISD. So hopefully this gives you some talking points for that. And also, remember, a reminder, this is the first time we've done this in Arlington ISD. And so please also, when you get some complaints along the way, have a little bit of grace with everybody and say, hey, you know what? I know. There's feedback loops that are built into this. We're going to get better every time, and we're going to make sure that our teachers have what they need to do great work for kids in classrooms. So please make sure you think about those things as we're moving forward with this stuff. KICKUP back to you, Justin.
All right. Thank you all. It is now 5:90, and we will recess and reconvene in closed sessions or chambers pursuant to sections 551.071 through 551.22, according to 551.09, and next round of code. And it works with the Texas Department of Education, that's what it's called on our agenda. We are now on recess.